It is now 7:00 PM. I'd like to call the January 31st, 2022 meeting of the Carver School Committee Meeting to order. You could please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance, symbol of the flag of the United States of America and as the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So just to remind everyone, this meeting is being held virtually in accordance with the government Massachusetts March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Members of the public can access this meeting via Zoom, in person at Town Hall, or on Area 58. So there's three ways to access this evening's meeting live.
Okay, and one other housekeeping item, so to speak. We have three members of the Carver School Committee who are currently attending on Zoom. So therefore, we will be taking all of our votes this evening on a roll call basis. So, oh, there's not a... Okay, so we are starting with the appointment of a school committee secretary. I'm sorry, bear with me a second. Jen has decided to step down as secretary since she's taken on the role of vice chair. So I will be looking for a nomination in a second for a member to take on the role of secretary until we reorganize the committee in May after the town elections. So would someone else? Jen?
Um, I would just like to ask if either Kelly or Colleen would be particularly interested in serving as secretary? If one of them would like the role, I would like to nominate the person who would want it.
I'm fine with whatever you guys decide.
It's not a challenging position, just taking notes when Gina's not here, which is not often.
Right. I just wanted to clarify that because I have taken some, um, some notes on meetings where Gina wasn't available, so.
Gina's awesome. We love her. That should go in the minutes. Um, so does either of you?
I'm fine. Yeah, I could do it.
Right. I would like to nominate Kelly Neme as the new secretary of the Carver School Committee.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Start on Zoom. Let's see. Oh, well, Andy?
Andy Cattarelli, aye.
Jen Pratt?
Jennifer Pratt, aye.
Kelly?
Kelly Neme, aye.
Colleen?
Colleen Zanuski, aye.
Stephanie Clarity, aye. It is unanimous. Thank you very much, Kelly.
Thank you.
And clearly, if you have any questions along the way, I think most of us have had a turn at recording secretary, so.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Any questions? And tonight, we have Tom Pinto joining us from the EAPC.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Good evening, Tom. Welcome.
Hi, Tom.
All right. I think first and foremost, Kelly, congratulations on the secretary position.
Oh, thank you.
Um, so I just, you know, you know, I'll be brief. It's been a long few days for everybody. I hope everyone was, uh, made it safely through the snowstorm and most importantly, maintained their power. I mean, it was, we've been doing a lot of storm removal over here. Um, as you all know, we've entered negotiations and I look forward to being a respectful and collaborative process. That's all I got to say tonight.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Tom.
Thanks, everybody.
So that brings us to comments from the general public. There's one person in our audience, not sure if that person would like to make a comment during public comment, but I would assume no, where it's Mrs. Maestis. But you're more than welcome to if you would like to make a comment. With that being said, if there's anyone that is online in Zoom, if you would like to make a comment, now is the time to do so. And if you could please enter your name into the chat, that would be great. We're up to 20 participants now, so.
I don't see anybody entering their name into the chat.
Okay, I do not either. So with that, we will move on to the approval of minutes. These are the open session minutes from January 20th, 10th, 2022. If someone would like to make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from January 10th, 2022's meeting.
Great. Do we have a second?
Second?
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote again.
Andy Cattarelli, aye.
Jennifer Pratt, aye.
Kelly Neme, aye. Colleen Zanuski, aye.
Stephanie Clarity, aye. The minutes have passed unanimously. And then that brings us to communications.
I know we do not have any specific communications tonight, so it's okay. We'll go right into reports from the superintendent.
Excellent.
And so our first agenda item tonight, Met Pathway presentation by Mr. Ruda. Unfortunately, Mr. Ruda was out today and is unable to attend this evening's meeting. Him and I did speak today and we've decided to table his presentation to our next meeting, scheduled meeting, which is February 14th. So we look forward to having Mr. Ruda and actually a couple of students here on the 14th to make a presentation about some of the exciting stuff that's been going on in the MBT pathway.
Excellent. Thank you.
So we'll go, we'll go right into our COVID update for this, for this meeting. So in terms of our overall cases, looking at the state data, we're actually up a little bit over the last two week period compared to the two week period in our last meeting on January 10th. But overall, in terms of our school data, our school data has actually improved. So we'll talk a little bit about the data reported by the state, which is townwide data, and then we'll, we'll make comparison to what that was on January 10th. Then we'll look at some of the data from the schools in terms of numbers of students and staff who are currently active with COVID. And those numbers are actually a little bit better than they were when we met a couple of weeks ago. So in terms of the overall data from the state's biweekly report, the case count for the two weeks ending on Thursday, January 27th, was actually 254 positive cases in Carver. That was up from 238 for the previous two week period when we met, which was actually the last week in December and the first week in January. The average daily incident rate over that last 14 days, 148.1, compared to 138.8. And our positivity rate over the last two weeks ending on January 27th was 24.78 compared to 21.24. Uh, so looking at the state data, that two week comparison of the last two weeks ending January 27th compared to the last week in December and to the last first week in January, overall, the town's numbers were up. But we have not actually seen a reflection of that in the schools. The schools' numbers are better. So we'll take a look at the school numbers a little bit. We'll also take a look at what the Board of Health reported, which was a little bit encouraging last week. So on Friday, January 28th, the County Board of Health reported there were 106 newly reported cases for the week of Friday, January 21st, through Thursday, January 27th. So it definitely shows last week, the case numbers in Carver were actually down a little bit because that 106 is kind of the total of the 254. So it was well, almost close to 150 that week before. So those numbers are trending down slightly. So that's, that's a positive. And then when you look at the schools' numbers, I think the, the best numbers to look at is actually the attendance tracker. Give me a second to pull that up. You know, as we've talked about before, we're tracking staff and student attendance throughout the year. And if you look at that when we first came back, in that week we first came back, there were, on January 3rd, there were 69 active students and 31 staff cases on the first day back on January 3rd. When we met on January 10th, there were 72 active cases among students. So on that day, there were 72 students out who were COVID positive, and there were still 12 staff members out. By the time I commented that that was obviously better than when, the first day when we came back on January 3rd, where there were 31 staff members out who were COVID positive. And then when student attendance was close between, was fluctuating between 80 and 83% over those first couple of weeks. So if you look at what's happened since then, so since we last met on January 10th, our checkpoints were, on the 13th, we started 69 positive students, 14 positive staff, but then we saw a big drop off. So 120, we had only 18 positive students district wide and five positive staff. Last week, we saw a number tick up a little bit again with 33 positive students and three staff went down to three. The last Thursday was 46 and nine students and staff. And then also today, the updated numbers of today, so we currently have 33 students who are, who are out today because they were COVID positive. We had 28 students in quarantine. We had one student in test and stay. And staff wise, we had five COVID positive staff with one in quarantine. The other thing I want to point out about these numbers is that test and stay number and our close contact number. You know, ultimately, if you've been identified as a close contact in school, then you're allowed to participate in test and stay. If you're identified as a close contact in your household or outside of school, you're not allowed to participate in test and stay and start to follow the quarantine procedures. So you'll see that our quarantine number is a lot larger than our test and stay number. And it really has been since we, since we came back. So there has been a lot of outside of, outside of school exposures for students. Though, again, looking back, even that comparison, obviously, with 72 students out on January 10th, our last meeting, and 12 staff, we're obviously in a much better position today with it being 33 and five. So the town's numbers have stayed high. The schools' numbers have improved over the last couple of weeks since we last met. So I don't know if there's any questions about that portion before I go into, start talking a little bit about the new school testing program that we've decided to participate in. And I was going to give the committee and the community an overview of that program. But I don't know if anybody has any questions about the overall numbers.
No, I think my questions are just going to tie into the new program that we're implementing, so.
Yep. Anyone else? Nope. Okay.
Okay. So I'll go back to the chair.
Thank you.
So the Department of Education, DSC, actually sent out a presentation to superintendents that we could possibly use pieces of with our communities. So I actually felt like their presentation was a good summary of the program. So I just want to acknowledge and give credit to the department that many of the slides being shown here are directly from DSC. They're DSC's slides. And if I've edited a slide in any way or added my own information, that is in red. And so anything that is in red was added by me. The rest are the slides directly from the Department of Education about the new testing program. So the, the first thing they wanted to point out, and it says, you know, last fall, we initiated test and stay. DSC is talking about that on a statewide level. And what they've been doing is they've been tracking, and so we're required, if a student participates in test and stay, the nurse is required to report those tests and the results. And obviously, that's happening across the state. So what the state did is they said, we've been, we've analyzed all the students who participated in test and stay since the beginning of the school year. And what they found out is looking at the results, is that 98% of those tests have been negative. So that's really an important number in terms of, you know, they make the statement, we know it's overwhelmingly safe to keep students in school where they thrive. Another piece of data that DSC is using to make his decision to offer this new testing program is beyond the fact that 98% of the students who participate in test and stay get a negative test result, is there's actually been a couple of studies of a similar program in California, Illinois, that was cited by the CDC in their test and state guidance. And that, the link is actually here to that data. I'm not going to go into the link, but it talks about the concept that they're noting secondary transmission rates in schools as only being 0.7 to 1.5%. Again, reaffirming their takeaway from their analysis of the data. And this is why, probably why I wanted to use DSC's presentation, is I wanted to make it clear that, you know, the Carver Public Schools is crunching this data. The state is crunching, is looking at all these numbers. They're looking at programs happening in other states. They're analyzing the test results from across the state of Massachusetts to, to make these recommendations. And, you know, so their takeaway of looking at these data points around students participating in test and stay and transmission rates in schools is that there is a low transmission rate. Doesn't mean there isn't a transmission rate in school, but there's a low one. So testing positivity rates in test and stay indicate that individuals identified in close contacts in school are very unlikely to contract or spread COVID-19. And this has been the key factor. It's why it's bolded in this slide. It's been the key factor in terms of their recommendation to school districts to adopt this new screening testing program. They're saying that there's a lot of energy and effort going into test and stay across the state. And, and maybe that effort could be better focused if it was focused on providing tests to people who may be symptomatic or participating in screening testing. If there's such a low percentage of students who are testing positive, if there's such a low percentage of presumed spread amongst close contacts in school. And that, that's like kind of the baseline, the key data point that they're using to make this decision to recommend a screening program versus test and stay. So then they say other states have made this move as well recently, and so far, they've been successful. So other states like Connecticut and Vermont have recently moved to this type of model, stepping away from contact tracing, stepping away from test and state programs and moving towards a screening testing program, which is what we'll be moving to. And so how's this program going to work? Districts and schools that select to participate will receive at-home answering tests for all staff members who choose to participate and all students whose parents got in signify interest by completing an opt-in form. So we've already gone through that process. We've asked parents to opt into the program, and I'll give you some of the native numbers later on. Schools and districts can distribute the at-home tests to all participating staff and students regardless of vaccination status. So I want to be really clear about this because that, that's one of the questions we received, that if a student is vaccinated, should they? Or, or is it recommended they participate in the screening testing program? And it is actually the recommendation that they do. So they're encouraging vaccinated students to participate in screening testing, to get these biweekly, or this weekly test at home for them to take. And they're saying that would be a good thing for them to participate in the program. Districts and schools participate, participating in symptomatic or pool testing, they choose to continue these testing strategies and discontinue contact tracing, test and stay. So they basically are giving you two options. You can keep what, we can keep doing what we've been doing, or we can move to this new screening program. And, but if you do move to the screening program, you still have, you have to commit to doing symptomatic testing, which we've been doing all along. We've been doing it for more than a year now. We, I think we started symptomatic testing like last December. If not December, definitely January. So, so we are going to continue that. So obviously, if there's a student who's symptomatic in school, we will test them and give them the rapid test in the office if, with parental permission. I just want to make it clear because this question comes up sometimes. No one is tested without parents' knowledge. Parents have to consent online and verbally to have their student tested in school. And we're also going to continue, as the recommendation, to continue with pool testing for our faculty and for athletes for winter sports. Now, we're going to reassess pool testing at the end of the winter sports season. So we're going to continue through the season and make a determination about spring. We did not do pool testing in the fall because the feeling was it was outside. There was a lot more concern about the indoor sports. So we'll be taking, we haven't made a final decision on that, but we'll definitely be reevaluating pool testing for athletes for the spring season. A key point I want to make here is it does say, using their professional discretion, school health professionals may determine if a specific situation warrants contact tracing. You know, so if there was an outbreak on a team or an outbreak in a particular classroom, the nurses could make the decision, we are going to institute contact tracing and institute quarantines. You know, so that would be at their discretion. They didn't want to take that discretion away from the nurses. We want to make it clear that by transitioning to the screening testing program, we're not going to be identifying school close contacts on a regular basis. The new option, DSC and DPH recommend that districts adopt this. So this is their recommendation. Again, it's not required that anybody adopts this, but it is the recommendation of the Department and DSC and the Department of Public Health. If you do so, you must notify your local boards of health, which I have done. So I've spoken to the health agent. We've had a meeting. We reviewed the testing protocols and he's reviewing with the Board of Health. And it just notes that, again, we have to maintain symptomatic testing in schools, which we're going to do. Okay. Uh, the key time period, this program runs from January 31st through April 22nd. So they're only guaranteeing everyone to receive their weekly test at home who signs up to participate through April 22nd. And then they say at that point, as we get towards the beginning of April, they'll make a determination whether they're going to continue this further into the year. I said that I think they're going to be analyzing, you know, what the, what the spread is, what the current situation with COVID is at that time. You know, as we know, last May and June were actually, knock on wood, hopefully it'll be again, last May and June were our quietest times during this whole pandemic. We had very few cases in school, like a handful at the most. And so I think there's some hope. We can always think of hope, but we know, we never know what COVID is going to give us because it seems to change all the time. But we'll go with the hope that May and June this year is like May and June last year. And so the department's going to take a look at that and say, do, at that point, do we still need to be making these at-home tests available to all, all these families and staff? So I just want to be clear that the program runs through April vacation in essence. So we have signed up. So we signed up by January 21st, which made us eligible to participate right away. So it does say districts that respond by January 1st will begin receiving tests for staff the week of January 24th, which we did, and for students during the week of January 31st. So our current numbers, we have 191 staff members who opted to participate in testing. That's 63% of the staff district wide. They did all receive their tests last week. We asked them to test on Sunday evening. So the 100, we have 191 staff members who are participating and tested. We did have two positive results last night as a, as a result of that testing. So maybe we had two people who maybe may have come to work today not knowing that they were positive. And so that's where we turn, stand in terms of staff. So I will say DSC did get the test to us in time for us to easily distribute to all staff on Friday afternoon. Now, we're hoping the same will happen with students this week, and the plan would be to distribute these tests on Friday to students. The students will take them home. And so right now, we have 185 or 23% of elementary school students who've signed up to participate in the testing program and 144, 20% of the middle high school students who opted into testing. The test, it's an at-home answering test provided by iHealth. Participating staff and students will receive one kit every two weeks. Each test kit has two tests in it. So you get one kit every two weeks and you have to, you'll hold on to your test. And we're going to be asking staff and students to test on Sundays. We think that Sunday night makes sense so that if there's someone who's positive, they don't come into school on Monday. First, we originally had a discussion about joining the test on Monday. Like, that doesn't make any sense. Why would we have students come to school who may possibly be positive and ask for the test on a, on Monday evening? And you're testing at home. So ultimately, I think it makes sense that we can have field tests on Sunday if they have a positive test result to report it to our nurses on Monday. And then the student who tested positive on, on a Sunday would have to, you know, it's five days based on from the onset of symptoms or from when they test positive. And they can return on day six, assuming they're feeling well and are ready to return to school. If they're not feeling well, then we would encourage them to stay home until they are feeling well. So when in theory a student is tested positive on a Sunday, I would think in most situations would, at most miss that week of school, but be back by the next Monday. But obviously, every situation is individual. So as, as you said, staff tests were delivered last week and staff tested for the first time last night. And students will hopefully be delivered this week. We don't have them in hand yet, but they're saying they should, we should have them by Wednesday. We'll distribute them this week and begin testing, asking families to begin testing on Sunday, February 6th. So those families who've opted to participate, they'll be getting an email from me this week outlining the details of how the test is going to be distributed, when they should receive their test at home, when they should take their test, who they should result, report their positive result to. So I'm going to send all that information at home, either direct email to, only to those families who've decided to participate. I will say that to the community, this, this was not a cutoff. You're not out of the program. You can join the program at any time you choose to. So if next week you decide we want to join the program, you just need to send me an email, send the building principal an email and say, we want to participate. We want to be part of this. And you can join in. And, and we'll, I'll be putting that reminder out to the community as well. Like I said, the plan is the distribution will occur during school and students will get their tests given to them to take home. At the elementary school, probably go into their backpacks. To the middle high school, we'll be giving it to the students. We'll send a reminder home that day. So there'll be an email to family saying, hey, your student was given a test kit today. You should be looking for that test kit because you're participating in the program. And same thing for the students as it was for the teachers. You're only going to get a test kit every two weeks. So probably every other Friday, starting this Friday. But as I said, those people participating in the program will get an email with all kinds of details about the specifics of what participation will look like. All positive tests should be reported to the school nurse. I do want to note here that we do not need to report positive results to the Department of Public Health, but we do need to report them to DSC. So each day, and I don't know if I've actually talked about this specifically before, DSC actually does a weekly count of all cases in schools. And we actually do a daily report. So each day, the nurses report to me the number of students in the district who have tested positive, either because they tested through one of our testing programs or because their family reported that they're out of school because they tested positive. And I report that number to the Department of Education on a daily basis. And we'll just continue to do that as we go forward. And obviously, any at-home tests on a Sunday night that are reported to us by families, we will, we will also, you know, report that to the Department of Education. And I will say this, I want to be clear on this as well. That report is 100% a number. There's no names. There's no gray bubbles. There's no identity in any way. It's just a number. So each day, the nurses say to me, you know, we had four students and one staff member that reported a positive result to us. I go onto the online form and say, Carver Elementary School, four students, one staff member. So there's no identifying information in any way transmitted to the state. And this would be the same thing in this situation. Be no identifying information shows up. This is the last slide. So districts and schools that select the new testing program will discontinue individualized contact tracing for at-home, for school-based close contacts. So the concept is, and where, where this came, part of where this came from is the nurses in all buildings across the state and schools are reporting, it's almost impossible to keep up with contact tracing as it is with the number of positive cases that we've had. We're really looking at doing contact tracing and we've really been almost limiting our contact tracing to lunchrooms, sports teams, hallway contact. Elementary school, a little bit easier because it's in one classroom. And the thought process was the health professionals are putting so much time and energy into contact tracing and test and stay. And the information that the data is showing is that 98% of those students are testing negative, that they're not transmitting in school. And then really, the focus should be, the focus should shift from contact tracing to screening. And so the whole design of this program is to shift, it's a, it's a different approach towards approaching COVID. And going saying, you were going to give everybody the ability to test. So they're saying, we're going to, the state is saying, we're giving every student and every teacher in the state of Massachusetts, if they choose to, the ability to get, to test themselves weekly. And if you want to participate in that, that's great. You know, even in no, obviously, a higher participation rate is better than a lower participation rate, but you're still doing some active screening of your, of your students and getting a sense of how many students are positive. And that the nursing staff should focus on finding positive cases through screening testing and through symptomatic testing. And that's where their energy should be because that's more effective use of their energy than test and stay and contact tracing. test and stay and contact tracing. That's the theory, that's the concept behind the shift. So that we have opted in. And as I said, we've started the testing with the staff. And we'll be starting testing with families shortly. And I know I'm repeating myself, but sometimes it's fair, it's worth repeating, that just know as a family member out there, that if you've decided not to participate at this time, you certainly can participate in the future. So you could join next week, the week after, February, March. Can't join after April twenty-second right now, because right now, the program only runs to April twenty-second. But up until that point, you can join in at any time that you would like to participate. The only other questions I want to clarify, at least address, is we have had some questions about should a person or a student, and the reality is, over the past month, we have a lot of students in this situation, is if you've tested positive in the past ninety days, should you participate in this program? The answer is really a little muddy. Really, the recommendation is saying, you really don't have to, and you probably shouldn't. But what they're saying on the rapid antigen tests, again, I am not an expert on these tests. But on the rapid antigen tests, that after a couple of weeks, you really shouldn't test positive on them because your viral load should be low enough that you don't get a positive test result. So if a family of, a student who tested positive in the last ninety days wants to participate, we shouldn't exclude them. And we should allow them to participate. But the general recommendation is they don't have to, if you've tested positive within the last ninety days. But certainly, family choice, and they can. On the PCR test, there is more evidence that you can test positive up to ninety days on the PCR test. And would be a clear recommendation that you don't need to take a PCR or participate in any kind of PCR testing program if you've been positive in the last ninety days. The other piece I do want to point out is, Desi is, actually, it says, we'll soon update their protocols. They actually released them this afternoon. So they have new protocols for this program that have just been released. I, I'm not presenting them tonight because I haven't had the time to go through them thoroughly or to have the nursing staff look at them. So there are going to be new protocols that we'll be playing out to the community this week based on this program. But to my knowledge, unless this changes the new protocols, is you were still identifying close contacts outside of school if reported to us. So if your student is a close contact at home and you recall the nurse and say, you know, my students are close contact because my, my husband or my spouse is positive, or their brother or sister is positive, then we, we are still implementing the five-day quarantine period. And we're going to say, you need to quarantine at home for five days, get tested, and return to school with a negative test result on day six. So that, that part of the quarantine program is not going away with this, because that's an outsider school, closed contact. And the evidence suggests that there's more transmission of outside of school close contacts versus in-school close contacts. So those are my last two clarifying pieces. And that is the end of my summary of the new testing program.
Okay, thank you for all of that information, Scott. I think we have some members that have some questions. Do you want to go first, Colleen?
Actually, the last slide was something that I, I was wondering about, you know, if you're participating in this screening, testing, and you were a close contact outside of school, you still are subject to, to a quarantine, even with a negative test if you're at home. You know, on Sunday night, you test negative, you're still subject to the quarantine, so I just wanted to make that clear. And Scott went over that, unless that changes.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to see if the new protocols change that. And I don't have a sense on that, so.
I mean, it's interesting, the, you know, this discrepancy between the in-school close contacts and the outside close contacts, but I, I do hear what you're saying, that when you're home, there's no masks and.
If, if you're, there's more mitigating factors in school in terms of wearing masks, maintaining some level of social distancing than there are outside of school.
Right. Okay, well, that makes that more clear. I mean, could somebody opt out, or it's just really an honor system, like whether or not you're going to whether or not you're going to test A and whether or not, I mean, certainly, if you had a a positive test, you should be reporting that as a responsible individual, but you know, I, I guess it's all an honor system in terms of whether or not you actually test it.
And, and I would hope that families that have decided to opt in, and we saw our numbers, they're relatively small. You know, twenty-three percent at the elementary school and twenty percent in the middle high school, I think, was the numbers exactly. That, that those families will, are interested in having this ability to screen regularly, and I think hopefully, if they're opting into the program, they would do that. I would, I would note, though, if a family does opt out, I think if they could let us know, that'd be great, if they make a decision. You know, so what I mean is, if you're in the program and then decide, I don't want to be in the program anymore, just let us know, and then we'll just continue. Because we have to put in a weekly order for tests.
Sure.
Or a bi-weekly order for tests. And that's why I'm saying that we have the ability to amp that number up too, so if more families want to participate. You know, so some of the comments that we've heard on, on this, some of the questions people have asked me are, well, my, my son or daughter is an athlete, the high school is doing pool testing, I really don't want to test twice a week. But if pool testing doesn't happen in the spring, then I want, I do want to do this. So can I opt in the last week of February vacation? And the answer to that question is yes, you, you can opt in, you know, at that time. So that's all, that flexibility is always there.
That's great. I'm glad, I'm glad that it's flexible for families. Does anyone else have any questions?
Scott, if somebody did choose to opt out, how would they do that? Just send you an email?
Yeah, if they could email myself or the building principal.
Okay.
And that they no longer want to participate in the program, that would be good.
Sorry. Jen?
Tell me, what percentage of staff opted in?
I believe it was sixty-three.
Hundred and ninety-one staff.
Sixty-three percent.
Sixty-three percent.
Thank you. You know, I'll just add that I think that this is good in the fact that this is going to bring some much-needed relief to nursing and administration. And I am happy that it is optional, because I don't think any student should have to take a test to go to school. But there are certainly families that have had trouble accessing tests that, you know, for their personal situations, maybe they have high-risk medical family members or medical anxiety, or you know, slew of things that this is, I think it's really good that this is an option for people to be able to opt in for those that, you know, want it or need it for their particular situations. And, you know, tests have been really hard to access, so for those that want this, I think that is fantastic, but I, I am happy that it is optional, because I would not support mandatory testing. So thank you for sharing all this information. I was concerned that Desi was going to require like a minimum, you know, opt-in percentage or something to be able to implement it, and so I think that's also good, that they're being flexible with that. And I think most of the families in Carver have been really responsible at keeping people home when sick and, you know, being honest about testing status, and so, you know, I'll just take a moment to say I appreciate, you know, families, you know, doing that and making the good choices, and it's it's encouraging to see our numbers dipping down. It seems like the little Omicron surge is waning, and, and that's good, so let's do what we can to keep our schools healthy and our kids learning.
Anyone else? Andy, do you have anything? No? Okay. Thank you very much, Scott.
I want to move on to.
Vaccination data.
Okay, so at our last meeting, the committee asked that we put out the vaccine survey to find out if we can make a guess, well, like, guess, make some determination on percentage of our students and staff that are vaccinated in each building. This is based on Desi's current requirement, mask mandates stay in place. But then if a school district did reach eighty percent of its staff or students in a particular building as being vaccinated, then it would default back to the school committee to make the choice as to whether or not to maintain the mask mandate. And the mask mandate is in place through the end of February, February twenty-eighth. Otherwise, the one change that was made last week is they actually said that the that if, if you reached the, if you reached the eighty percent before, they were saying that those students who are unvaccinated need to continue wearing masks. And they have taken away that provision. So they're saying, if you reach the eighty percent, the school committee can make a choice of whether they made mask optional for all students. But as we're going to see in the data, we're not very close to reaching eighty percent in either one of our based on responses. So elementary staff vaccinations survey results, one hundred and thirty-nine employees at the elementary school, we got one hundred and twenty-one respond. Of one hundred and twenty-one responded, eighty-one percent said they are vaccinated. Five-point-eight percent said they're not vaccinated, and twelve-point-nine have not yet responded. Elementary students, you know, obviously, our response rate here was very low, we had two hundred and forty-two families respond. So sixty-seven-point-five percent of families did not respond to the survey. But of those who responded, seventeen-point-five were yes, fifteen-one, fifteen-point-one were no. So looking at that data just in a different way, so all the families who responded, our vaccination rate was fifty-three percent. You know, so you ask that question of, well, what if we got everyone to respond? What if we were able to get everybody to do it? Does this number extrapolate out? Would it be, and I, I'm guessing it'd probably be fairly close. You know, so, you know, maybe realistically, if we were, we might have fifty percent of our students at the elementary school who are currently vaccinated. You know, so that's based on our two hundred and forty-two responses. I did the same thing at the elementary school. So middle, I'm sorry, at the middle high school. So at the middle high school, our response rate was a little low, we had fifteen percent that haven't responded yet. Of those who responded, four-point-five are no, but eighty percent are yes. So we have an eighty percent at both the elementary school and the middle high school in terms of staff. Looking at the survey for middle high school student vaccination results, six to twelve. Again, sixty-two, sixty-two percent with no response. Thirty percent yes, seven-point-nine percent no. Looking at that data the same way we did. You know, so actually, of our students who responded, eighty, almost eighty percent, seventy-nine-point-four are yes. So you go back to that question, if we, if we actually did get a response from everybody, would that number extrapolate out? Now, my answer would be probably not, because I think a lot of people who are no may not have responded. But that's making guesses, I'm making conjectures there, I really don't know how that data would play out if we had all the responses. But we do, also, we have to look at what the real numbers are. And so what the real numbers are, if we took all of our staff and students at the middle, at the elementary school, right now, we have confirmation that twenty-seven-point-five percent of staff and students are vaccinated. Thirteen-point-six are no, and really, almost sixty percent have not responded. And at the middle high school, very similar data, you have about thirty-eight percent yes, seven-point-four no, fifty-five percent have responded. And I will say that, you know, I got a, I, I didn't get a lot of emails, but I did get a decent number of emails. Where, you know, people, I had a variety of responses. You know, some people were saying, you have no right to have this data, I'm not going to give it to you. We had other people respond and say to me, I'm not going to respond to this because I support the mask mandate, and I want to see the mask stay in place. I had other people respond saying, you, the district has no right to consider vaccinating my student, which really wasn't part of the survey, but people were just, you know, thinking that way. So I will say that the, the survey, in my mind, on a small level, it's not like I got hundreds of emails. Well, I got a few emails, but they, they were on the spectrum of responses you would expect. So if we said, here's the type of responses we're going to get to the survey, I got a little handful of all of them. In terms of how people felt about even us asking the question of what their vaccination status was. And then we, I did have a couple of parents who were concerned, saying, you know, you shouldn't be doing this through an adaptation, it shouldn't be on the honor system. Parents should really have to provide their, their medical documents and their vaccination cards to prove that their student is vaccinated if the district's really considering taking off masks. And my response to those families was currently COVID-nineteen, the COVID-nineteen vaccination is not required to attend school. Are the vaccinations that are required to attend school. We do ask for medical records to support, you know, for people to document that they have those vaccinations. But I think the Department of Education at this time didn't want to put that. So this was, the form we used was actually a template developed by Desi. Because I don't think they wanted to push that question out, they didn't want to give people the impression that this was a mandate and that students were required to be vaccinated. And that the feeling was, I think, once you really started asking for medical documentation or vaccination cards, that it would give a sense that maybe this was a mandate. And I think Desi wanted to be real clear that there's no, at this time, there is not a mandate or requirement for students to have the COVID-nineteen vaccine to attend school. They didn't want to create that point of confusion. You know, so my, my takeaway right now is whether it was people not wanting to respond, people not responding, that we weren't, we're not really that close to eighty percent in either one of our buildings. And that my recommendation would be that we, you know, follow the Desi guidance and see how they updated and changed in terms of the mask requirements in the coming months. You know, as of right now, the mask requirement is in place through February twenty-eighth. You know, if it continues longer beyond February twenty-eighth, and the committee wants us to go back out and try to solicit this data again, we could certainly do that, but I think that we should hold on that a little bit would be my personal recommendation.
Okay, thank you very much for that, Scott. Does anyone have any questions or comments they'd like to make? Nope. Okay, that brings us to recommendations from the superintendent.
So we're going to turn it to Ron, who's going to talk a little bit about FY twenty-two and FY twenty-three budget.
Thank you, Ron.
Evening, everybody. I'll start with FY twenty-two.
This, sorry, Ron, just to have a second.
This show is more interesting.
Why do the?
You did FY twenty-two first, see the financials. Yes, we're just starting the beginning of the third financial quarter. Your budget continues to track right on pace as expected. You do have a handful of transfers at the beginning of the third quarter, if you tap the, the transfer tab. Your first is over at the elementary school, we had some additional HVAC services for the heating system over there, so you see a transfer for elementary HVAC. The next three are all related to special education, and it continues the theme that I talked a little bit about in the FY twenty-three budget build. And that is a shift from out of district services to trying to provide some of those services in-house. So your first is just with your special education evaluation and testing line for clinical evaluations for students, and then your next two are for collaborative, collaborative tuitions, and then special education contract services. So for the collaborative, it's really a shift of services from private outplacement to a collaborative, which is a public outplacement. And with the special education contract services, those are just services, special education services for students here in district versus providing those services and out-of-district placement. Otherwise, it continues a net zero set of transfers for quarter three, and yeah, quarter three continues to roll on.
Do we need a motion about to approve the transfers?
Yes, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget transfers as presented.
I'll second.
You have a motion in a second, again, this is a will-call vote.
Andy Cattaroli, aye.
Jennifer Pratt, aye.
Kelly Neme, aye.
Colleen Zanuski, aye.
Stephanie Clarity, aye. That vote passes unanimously, thank you.
Thank you for that. Your next bit of information on FY twenty-two is just that brief memo, your financial memo. So the first page are just your warrants, I know we don't have everybody here in the room, we got our next meeting to get signatures for all of our warrants, you see payroll and expenses there, itemized down to the penny for each of our payment cycles. And then a little bit of information for you when it comes to state and federal finances. On Beacon Hill, we had Governor Baker, he signed a four-billion-dollar COVID-nineteen spending relief plan. He uses some ARPA funds that the state got from the Fed, as well as some existing revenue surplus that they have right now in FY twenty-two there. They're trending at about a twenty, twenty percent above projected revenue for the state, so they're looking to use some of that surplus. This means that the state still has about two-point-three billion in ARPA funds that has been, to be appropriately later, hasn't been appropriated yet. Most of the plan focuses on healthcare and workforce, economic development, and so on. They've got about three hundred million, it's earmarked for education. And it includes a slate of grants that'll focus on special education, some HVAC, and even educator recruitment. We haven't seen RFPs out yet, the We haven't seen RFPs out yet. It's still early in the development process, but uh we'll keep an eye out for those and obviously pursue anything that could be of interest to the Carver Public Schools to support our our programs and our work.
Excellent.
Uh in Washington, you obviously heard about the one point two trillion dollar federal infrastructure bill. Again, it's focused on typical infrastructure, roads, bridges, power grid infrastructure, those sorts of things. Uh one thing that is of interest in education, though, is that the bill also carves out about seven point five billion to develop uh the nation's first network for electric vehicles, charging stations around major highways around the country. And what's interesting is it also earmarks a portion of that money, again, likely in exploratory grants to entice schools to begin transitioning to electric school buses. No information yet uh about this, exactly what it will look like, what the grants could look like. Um but it seems to be a big component of that electric um electric vehicle expansion portion of the infrastructure bill. So as we learn more about the way that the feds will administer this, we'll also keep an eye out for any grants that um would make sense for Carver.
Excellent. Thank you very much. That would be great.
Uh lastly, I'll just give you a brief update on all things FY twenty-three. Uh I don't have uh any presentation for you today. At this time, we're still working with the town administrator. We have a new interim town administrator, obviously, uh and the finance director on our FY twenty-three budget, really just an attempt to reduce our current projected shortfall. And hopefully to have something more for you in the coming weeks.
Great. Thank you very much for the update. Does anyone have any questions for Ron? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm moving on to the second media policy, DJB purchasing procedures. And so we actually looked at this last meeting. Uh the school district has a credit card with a thirty thousand dollar limit. Occasionally work with vendors, uh not accept purchase orders or acquire a credit card. Uh all purchases would need to be approved by the business office. We have a pre-approved process in place. Um so we looked at this policy, I think as part of our process, they're recommending that we adopt the policy for the use of this card. Um during our first meeting, there were no specific suggestions for revisions of the policy. Um so my recommendation is that uh we move forward and approve this policy this evening. Uh Ron, I don't know if you have anything to add on this one. Uh no, we we talked a lot about it at the last meeting, but if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer.
Anyone have any questions for Ron regarding the policy? Okay, seeing none, would someone like to make a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve the policy DJB purchasing procedures as presented.
Second.
Excellent. We have a motion in a second. Gina, did you get that? It was Andy. Okay.
Thank you.
Um again, we're a roll call vote. So Andy?
Indy Catterelly, aye.
Jennifer Pratt, aye.
Kelly Neme, aye.
Colleen Zanuski, aye.
Stephanie Clarity, aye. Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, then we have one more policy that uh we were looking at at our last meeting, we were bringing back for a second reading. Uh and that was our student organizations policy. So we'll slowly come up there. Here we go. So the policy some committees reviewed this, we brought to the committee for a first reading. Uh the recommendation was an addition of this one section, uh which is a red uh that by September fifteenth, all student organizations should submit a summary of planned activities for the year after the principle for approval. Uh any organization formed after September fifteenth will submit a summary of planned activities in thirty days of formation. Uh during the first meeting, there were no specific suggestions for revisions to this policy. Uh and the recommendation is to approve the policy this evening uh as presented.
Excellent. Would someone like to make a motion?
I move to approve policy JA, JA, the student organizations as presented.
I'll second.
Excellent. We have a motion in a second. And again, it's a roll call vote.
Indy Catterelly, aye.
Jennifer Pratt, aye.
Kelly Neme, aye.
Colleen Zanuski, aye.
Stephanie Clarity, aye. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Um so should everyone go into their reports and then do the disclosure or?
Uh which I think whatever you'd like, whatever you'd like to do.
Okay, so I'm, I will kick off um reports from the school committee by um reading a disclosure. So um it is a disclosure in response to an open meeting law complaint. In response to a finding by the Attorney General's Office based on an open meeting law complaint, the school committee is publicly releasing the following email. An email sent on September twenty-six, twenty twenty by one member of the school committee to all other members regarding a complaint the committee had received about several posts made by the member on social media. The email will be attached to the minutes of tonight's meeting and posted on the district's website, carver.org in accordance with the school committee's regular practice. So is there anyone that would like to share a report with the committee and the community?
Um I would just like to thank all of our um town workers, DPW, for clearing up the roads and very thankful that our power didn't go out, and I'm glad the kiddos got to go to school today. Um and uh you know, I'm looking forward to great things ahead and um wanted to thank everyone for their help.
So, so Colleen, I just second that. Everyone's staff did a great job. Uh pedestrians, bus drivers, uh you know, all of our support staff, uh in terms of getting the buildings ready uh after such a large storm. Um and you know, the, I think the hour delay worked well today. Um and everybody did a great job getting it ready so that we could be in school today. So thanks to everybody.
Absolutely. And I also just want to quickly add thank you to Superintendent Me for that one hour delay this morning to allow our out-of-district staff um and teachers and kiddos um to have some extra time to make it from their communities to Carver. I I have heard that that was very much appreciated, so I just wanted to pass that along and say thank you. This was truly um community effort. So thank you. Anyone else?
Um I'll just, hi, um I'll just echo Colleen's sentiments and um you know, I hope that all of our families and staff made it through the storm okay, nobody had any damage. Um I think Carver's a town seemed to fare pretty well. Um you know, I did have a couple of parents um that I saw like on social media worried about bus stops, and I think that um DPW and transportation were working together well to make sure everybody was safe. And so I just appreciate everyone's efforts on that. And um I'm really happy that we were able to have school today. And um I hope that as we enter February tomorrow, this year is flying by, that um you know, we can just stay healthy and productive for the next few weeks until we get to February vacation. Um so until the fourteenth, I just hope that um everyone continues to stay healthy.
Absolutely. Excellent. Anyone else?
Um I'll just join in and say uh thank you everyone for helping clear the the snow for you know, the kids and the and the schools open and the town clear. I really appreciate that. And I just want everyone to stay safe and and stay warm and see you on Valentine's Day.
Anyone else?
Yep. I just want to echo everybody else's sentiments about the snow removal. Uh I think they did an absolutely fantastic job, and we were one of the few um towns in the area who actually went to school today, so I was I was thrilled about that. And also a special shout out to our nursing staff um at the, at both schools actually for, you know, dealing with everything that's been going on the last couple of years, but in particular, even just this week with so many weird and strange things happening with COVID. Um I'm I'm pretty pleased with um some of the responses that I've gotten from the nursing staff um at school, and I'm sure other parents are appreciative of that as well. So thank you very much to all of them as well.
Excellent. Thank you. Um okay, so really briefly, hopefully we won't be in a too bad of a storm this coming weekend. I hear we have a potential storm on Friday. Um the Massachusetts Association of School Committees Presidential Retreat is scheduled for this upcoming weekend in Lee, which I hope to be attending. Um as well, I think the committee um as well as some other members in our district um were mem- were invited to the Cape Cod and Islands Legislative Breakfast Event this Friday that is being co-sponsored by MASK Division Seven. Um the presentation is going to include um a whole gamut of different presenters. Um the main focus is going to be around mental health and the challenges that districts are facing um at a staffing level, at a student level, funding, availability of sources um and services. Carver is a part of Division Seven, um included with Wareham and Rochester, and then all of Cape Cod and the Islands. So some of the challenges that some of the districts face are unique. Um but it's going to be a great opportunity, so if um any members of the community are able to attend, um it'll be great to hear from some students who've taken a course that is called Teen Mental Health First Aid, which I hope to be bringing more information to our district too um as well soon. So hopefully, I'll be bringing lots of great information back for our district and I look forward to a time when COVID is in our rearview mirror. Maybe further away than that, right? Behind us would be great, but um thank you to everyone for everything that they are doing to keep our students and our staff safe and in school. Oh, and before I forget, I wanted to give a shout out to um the Carver Middle High Schools or Carver High Schools mock child team. They successfully made it to regionals. Yay! Congratulations to everyone. So hopefully we'll be able to get them in here maybe in February or March, um so they can come tell us a little bit about their experience. So and thank you to Jackie Perkins as our moderator. So thank you very much and congratulations to everyone. Very exciting things. Okay, so with that, I would welcome a motion to adjourn to executive session.
I'll make a motion to adjourn from open meeting and move to executive session to discuss she doesn't have the agenda in front of me. Um.
Can I read it? With respect to collective bargaining with the in-personnel and to discuss the complaint brought against a public officer or individual.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And not to return to open meeting afterwards.
There you go. Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. We need a roll call vote, please.
Indy Catterelly, aye.
Jennifer Pratt, aye.
Ellie Neme, aye.
Colleen Zanuski, aye.
Stephanie Clarity, aye. Our public session of our meeting is adjourned at eight oh two PM. Thank you, everyone.
Go ahead, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.